I will call this meeting to order. This is the Thursday, February seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-two, regular city council meeting. We'll start with roll call.
Councilman Becker.
Here.
Councilman Hartwick.
Here.
Councilman Housley is unexpected absence. Councilman Johnson.
Here.
President Shear.
Here. Next will be agenda item three, which is our public hearings. We will start with three A, which is the community development block grant closed program presentation and public hearings.
Thank you. Kiana from MSA is with us. I'll just give a brief overview of this item. Some council was with our group prior when we had our revolving loan funds. Back in two thousand and nineteen, the Wisconsin Department of Administration determined to close the CDBG loan program. It was called revolving loan fund on our end. We had some unused funds in the state asked for a couple of options, one to reimburse those, which was just under one point five million dollars. The three loans that we had at that time that we were managing, the city had made the the option to purchase out and continue managing those three loans. That was with Blodgett Milling Company, Ford eighty-eight Investments, and Badger forty-seven. As mentioned, we surrender the one point five million dollars to the state. The state did fortunately turn around and create a grant program called the CDBG Closed Program. They allotted one point five million grant money for which the city could apply. We have two projects that were identified as meeting the potential for the requirements that the state had set forth. One being the former scrapyard, the intersection of Loroman, Hake, and Oak Street, known as the Lob Lorman. And second was facility improvements pertaining to the water main replacement and street reconstruction. So as council may remember, both of those objects, we were able to get awarded grant money, and we are in the midst of working on those. I also provided some history in the memo that shows actions up until now. Part of the program requirement is an approved participation plan, set forth some adoptions resolutions, for example, if for housing ordinance, use of force ordinance and the residential anti-displacement relocation assistance plan, also called as FRED rep. We had the first public hearing held in late two thousand and twenty. This is the second public hearing that is required to be held. I will introduce Kiana Lynn. She is with MSA. MSA is coordinating our CDBG programs, and I will let her take over with some introduction. Kiana.
Thanks so much. Yeah. My name is Kiana Lynn. I'm with MSA Professional Services, and we are doing the CDB administration for both the Loroman and the Water Main Replacement Projects. So today, we're just gonna kind of give a brief overview, and if there's any citizens that want to give comment on their views of the program, there's a time for them to do that as well. So with that, I will jump right into our public hearing for the Loroman Scrapyard Remediation Project. So this project funds include a little bit less than one, one point five million in CDBG Closed Public Facilities Funds for the blight elimination. The city has acquired properties located at one fifteen Loroman Street, two oh five Hawk Street, and six hundred Oak Street for two hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars. The environmental consultants on the project TerraCon has been paid twenty-one thousand, six hundred and thirty-five dollars and seventy-five cents for the environmental on that. There's three hundred thousand, six hundred and thirty-three dollars and sixty-seven cents of CDBG Closed PF Funds that have been issued from the grant for the poverty acquisition. And this includes title work and environmental consulting fees. So that's the funds that the city received back from doing a draw from these funds. Demolition of the project is anticipated to begin March or April of twenty-two, and the project needs to be completed by December thirty-first of twenty-two. So you don't have any commoner questions on the project review? Okay. So at this time, if there's any citizens that want to give comment on this, their view of the program for the Loroman Scrapyard Remediation Project, there's a time for that right now.
It does not appear that we have any in person.
Okay. That sounds good. And then we just have an item there for any other CDBG issues, the council or anyone has for this specific project, the Loroman Project.
And it does not appear that there are any.
Thank you. So then we will move on. We'll do basically the same exact thing here for the Water Main Replacement Project. This project includes partial funding about three hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars of CDBG Closed Public Facility Funds for fifty-nine hundred linear feet of water main and road rehabilitation in the area of Rockwell Avenue, South Main Street, Hilltop Trail West, and Peterson Street. No CDBG funds have been expended to date. The Wisconsin Department of Administration has granted the environmental certification for this project. They deemed that does not have an impact on the environment, so no further environmental review will be needed for this project. The city has entered into a service agreement with Rupert Milky for their project engineering, and the project has not been awarded to a contractor yet. I believe that is going to bid shortly or may have already, and the construction is anticipated to commence March or April of twenty-two. And same as the Loroman Project, the project must be completed by December thirty-first of two thousand and twenty-two. So you don't have any questions on that project? Now we can skip into the citizens' view on the program for the Water Main Replacement Project. If anyone has any comment on that.
There appears to be none in person.
Okay, sounds good. And from here, if anyone has any other CDBG issues with this specific project, the Water Main Replacement Project.
There's to be none.
Okay. Good. Thank you for your time, and if you guys have any other questions, you know where to reach me.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
You too. That takes us to agenda item number four, which is our public comment. As a reminder, the city council will receive comments from city residents. Comments are generally limited to three minutes per individual. Anyone wishing to speak is required to sign up in advance or state the following items for the record when called upon. That would be name, address, subject matter, and contact information. No action will be taken on any public comments unless the item is also elsewhere on the agenda. We do have one public comment signed up for this evening, and that would be Tim Nathan. If you will approach the podium, say your name and address, please.
Good evening. My name is Tim Nathan. My address is N eighteen ninety-one Grant Street, Fort Atkinson. I really only have a question more than I do have a comment, and it's about the development that's going to be happening as we expand the city in the south side there. And what's going to happen with Grant Street? And if there's any expectation of annexation of the properties on Grant Street and for themselves.
So unfortunately, we are not able to answer questions, but we can have a city representative reach out to you with the.
Fantastic. Appreciate that.
No problem.
That's all I needed.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
I do not have any others signed up, so this will be a first call for public comment, either in person or online. This is a second call for public comment. This is a third and final call for public comment. We'll close our public comment for this evening. That takes us to agenda item five, which is our consent agenda. As a reminder, the consent agenda that is outlined. I believe they can still hear us. Our camera just is having issues. There we go. The consent agenda outlined is presented for action by the city council. Items may be removed from the consent agenda on the request of any one council member. Items not removed may be adopted by one action without debate. Removed items may be taken up either immediately after the consent agenda or placed later on the agenda at the discretion of the council president.
I move to approve the consent agenda as listed. Items five A through five F.
Second.
We have a motion and a couple of seconds. Any discussion? All of those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. That motion carries. Agenda item six petitions, requests, and communications. This evening, we have none. Yep, no problem. Wow. Agenda item seven resolutions and ordinances. Seven A is the third and final reading of an ordinance to adopt amendments to the City of Fort Atkinson Comprehensive Plan.
Good evening. So as council recalls, there are three components to this, the comprehensive plan, the official map, and the land division and development code. The land division development code is is not necessarily tied into the other two. The official map is, I think we're all aware of that now, the third reading is the the city's mapping of areas both within and beyond the city's municipal boundaries for road right-of-way. To make sure that the comprehensive plan, which is the overriding document of the city in terms of planning, agrees with the official map, we're making changes to the comprehensive plan as well to reflect those transportation facilities that are listed on the official map. I have received no comments regarding this since our last meeting. I believe council has received today communication related to that from the mayorments. But I'd be happy to answer any questions that council may have related to this.
Beyond the communications we we received today, was there any other feedback that city staff received on on any of this?
There were two attendees at the landowner meeting. Kim Chaney and a representative of Bonnie Hom, I believe, Kim Felker. And I did have a phone conversation with a gentleman at the end of Fox Hill Lane. I can't recall his name, but he's not affected by this, but had read about it in the paper. The comprehensive plan portion in particular, and had some good questions and conversation about his property. And outside of Mr. Nathan, that's that has been it.
Thank you.
Andy, can you just confirm for me? So I know they're all listed separately on here. So the changes to the comprehensive plan, the official map, and the land division and development code. In your mind, though, or for planning purposes, I mean, I get that there are three separate things to vote on and and address, but are they really all? Like, do they all need to happen simultaneously, or can things be voted on at at different times, or does that not necessarily make sense for effectiveness purposes?
Sure. So the the land development, there's a there are three documents that kind of control planning within the city. The first is a comprehensive plan, as we're all very much aware of. The second is the zoning code, which we're also equally aware of, and the third is this land division and development code. We have been, that has been on our list for quite some time to complete this third code. That could move forward completely separate. The official map is tied to the comprehensive plan or the comprehensive plan map. As I mentioned, the two have to agree, so we can't make changes to one without making sure that the other is is consistent. So those two are tied. In terms of approvals, I don't think there really is any any reason to to move ahead tonight or to delay. There's nothing driving this in terms of a timing on either of these three items. I do know that the official map and the comprehensive plan, I think, have to be approved together.
No, the comprehensive, the official map must be consistent with the comprehensive plan, so the official map cannot be approved unless and until the comprehensive plan amendments are approved.
So that would have to come before.
The comp plan amendment would have to come before, and that's why they're ordered the way they are on the agenda.
Okay, thank you.
I'll go ahead and make the motion to adopt the ordinance to adopt amendments to the City of Fort Atkinson Comprehensive Plan.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? This will be a roll call vote.
Councilman Becker.
Aye.
Councilman Hartwick.
Aye.
Councilman Housley.
Aye.
Councilman Johnson.
Aye.
President Shear.
Aye. That motion carries. Agenda item seven B is the third final reading and possible action relating to an ordinance to repeal and recreate section one dash thirteen of the municipal code regarding the official map for the City of Fort Atkinson.
I'll just mention this, this one new bit of information, I guess, related to the official map that that kind of was lost in a lot of the discussion. The official map was something that was laid out in the comprehensive plan as a to-do for the city. I believe back in two thousand and ten, maybe the original, two thousand and nine, when the original comprehensive plan was done. It came to my attention when I arrived here in two thousand and fifteen as a question as to why we had not moved forward on that. And we had, in fact, begun the process of this in two thousand and twenty. We had hired SEH, who also had taken care of our land division ordinance to also move forward with the official mapping process. I believe that was October of two thousand and twenty. And then we subsequently transitioned that into Vandewell and Associates, who has done quite a bit of our planning. It was a better fit to finish out the official map and council reviewed and approved that contract in, I believe, October of twenty-one. So it's been a long time coming to get to this point. And I think that was lost a bit, perhaps, in the various discussions that we've had, that this is, this is something that has been out there for a while on the city's task list. Outside of that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have related to that.
I guess I just want to ask, in terms of approval on this, obviously, we did receive communication from some resident concern. You know, it is tough when that comes the day of a meeting, because that doesn't necessarily allow us adequate time to to have conversations and discussions that we need to. I do appreciate that our city manager took a tremendous amount of time to provide a very thorough update to to us on that. But I guess from your perspective, do you feel that there's any additional information that needs to be shared or further explained that hasn't already happened? Or, you know, is there still an opportunity to potentially clarify things or provide further details on some things before a decision would be made?
I don't think so. I think I think the comments that Mr. Merriman brought up, I think manager Lemire responded to those in some, in some detail. I think further, Mr. Merriman himself had indicated that that property has changed hands, so concerns related specifically to that parcel that that are still remaining, I think, are probably best to be discussed with the future owner. There was a question on parks that came up, and I think we talked about that the last time that the city is is moving ahead with a comprehensive parks plan. I think what we've learned a bit is that just because we put an asterisk on a map that says, here's a park, I can't describe exactly what size that is or how it should be configured, and that's an important thing to be able to note. It doesn't, however, prohibit us from putting such on an official map and indicating the intention of the city to try to develop a park in that area. Again, the official map is only to allow us to have a seat at the table should development occur outside of our borders. So indicating that we wanted to park there and some road right-of-way perhaps in that area would be assigned to developers who are planning in that area to to move forward with something that the city of Fort Atkinson had some some thoughts, you know, in that area. Beyond that, I don't really think, I don't think there's a whole lot that I would clarify unless you had questions on such. I think it's been fairly straightforward. I think we've done a a good job answering the questions that have come before us and reaching out to the town ahead of time on this, as their residents may have turned to them with questions, and I haven't heard from anyone at the town of Koshkong that they had any residents reach out to them. So other than the few communications I mentioned, it's been generally fairly either well-received or looked upon as as a non-issue.
I think, Andy, I think you brought up a great point. I think, you know, further examination of of our parks and what we want in the future probably is in order. And I think some of our existing parks have kind of evolved in the way they're used over the last several years. For example, Ralph Park with the addition of the skate park, and it's a little bit more youth-oriented than it used to be, and I think, you know, if there's an opportunity in the future for residents to express what they would maybe like to see in the future with some of these potential future sites, I I think that would definitely be a good thing.
I agree.
I know I've probably said it at the last two readings of this, but since my involvement with the City of Fort Atkinson and planning, we've been discussing this, and that's been back since two thousand and fifteen, so it is nice to see that we have potentially reached that point where we can truly have an official map and be more precise and considerate in in how we expand and and how the residents of the townships can can understand how we are expanding. So I do appreciate all the effort that has gone into this. I do appreciate the comments that were sent via email this morning. From a council perspective, I did review them. Please note that, so that is all I have to say on that.
I will move to adopt the ordinance to repeal and recreate section one dash thirteen of the municipal code regarding the official map for the City of Fort Atkinson.
Second. We have a motion, and again, a couple of seconds. This will be a roll call vote.
Councilman Becker.
Aye.
Councilman Hartwick.
Aye.
Councilman Housley.
Aye.
Councilman Johnson.
Aye.
President Shear.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. That takes us to agenda item seven C, which is the third final reading and possible action relating to an ordinance to repeal and re- recreate the land division and development code for the City of Fort Atkinson.
Yeah, so this is, as I mentioned earlier, the third of our, our, you know, planning level documents, if you will. This really governs two things. Number one, it governs how we move through the process of orderly divisions of land. And number two, it provides a recipe for what our expectations are in the development of land in the city. So the recipe would include sidewalks and streets of a certain width in certain areas. It would include radius of curvature around those streets to either accommodate quick turns or very slow turns in pedestrian areas. It talks about street trees. It talks about where appropriate development should occur with respect to the soils and the water, excuse me, the hydrologic conditions of the site. So that really is at a very high level, the two areas that this document deals with. It does supersede the nineteen ninety-three subdivision code, as we call it, which was a much smaller document. I believe twenty pages or so. This is a much more substantial document, and I think covers quite a bit more, but also brings us into the more common, I guess, detail of this code among some of our peers in the municipal world, so I'd be happy to answer any questions regarding the land division and development code.
Safe to assume we would not build any more subdivisions without sidewalks in the future?
Correct.
Are all the sidewalks built at the city expense or landowner?
If it's a new development, it is included in the the developer's expense. Now, public right-of-way includes sidewalk, roads, curb and gutter, water, sewer, all of that, and there are various financing negotiations that occur with that. So sometimes the developer pays for the whole thing. Sometimes the city pays for a portion of things and whatnot. If you're putting in new or if you're retrofitting in an existing neighborhood, for instance, to the south of Rockwell Avenue, where we're doing the water main work this year, we are we are hoping that we get decent bids back to put new sidewalk on both sides of the road, and that, and all of those streets were working on that part of the city. For whatever reason, did not see developers put in sidewalks when the development was built. So in that situation, the city will be paying for that as part of the contract for all of the water main replacement work and road improvements.
I like that, and you got that kind of problem too over by Berry School, where you got lots with, lots without, where it's kind of hard for a kid to walk to school. He's got to walk on a sidewalk, then in the street, then on the sidewalk. Like, requiring him to be there is great.
Yeah, if you begin to look, there's some real head scratchers when it comes to sidewalk in the city.
Several years ago, very early in my council tenure, we had a controversy about a neighborhood that was supposed to have a sidewalk put in and had been promised, and some people wanted it and some people didn't. So I think clarifying that, yes, they're required, and they're going to be put in the future is is only a good thing for everybody's sanity, frankly.
I agree.
I will make the motion to adopt the ordinance repealing or recreating chapter seventy of the City of Fort Atkinson Municipal Code relating to land division and development.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? This will be a roll call vote.
Councilman Becker.
Aye.
Councilman Hartwick.
Aye.
Councilman Housley.
Aye.
Councilman Johnson.
Aye.
President Shear.
Aye. That motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Agenda item seven D is the third final reading and possible action relating to an ordinance to amend sections forty-two dash thirty-six and forty-two dash thirty-seven of the City of Fort Atkinson Municipal Code relating to the Historic Preservation Commission.
Thank you. So this is the third reading of this ordinance. And we've presented it two times to this body and one time to the ordinance committee already. Just as a reminder, it makes some changes to the Historic Preservation Commission, clarifying roles and responsibilities in terms of reviewing projects and certificates of appropriateness. And it changes the requirements to be on that commission, allowing a little bit more flexibility due to previous difficulty in recruiting new members. If there are any questions, I would be happy to to answer them. The Historic Preservation Commission does support these, the changes to the ordinance.
We probably questioned this one out at the last few meetings, so I moved to adopt the ordinance to amend sections forty-two dash thirty-six and forty-two dash thirty-seven of the City of Fort Atkinson Municipal Code relating to the Historic Preservation Commission.
Second.
A motion and a second. This will be a roll call vote.
Councilman Becker.
Aye.
Councilman Hartwick.
Aye.
Councilman Housley.
Aye.
Councilman Johnson.
Aye.
President Shear.
Aye. Motion carries. Agenda item seven E is the third final reading and possible action relating to an ordinance to amend section fifty-eight dash one forty-eight of the City of Fort Atkinson Municipal Code relating to the sale of tobacco, nicotine products, electronic smoking devices, and electronic smoking device paraphernalia.
Yes, again, this is the third reading of this ordinance. Chief Bump has presented the first two. We also prevented it, presented it to the ordinance committee, which gave a positive recommendation to the council. I'd be happy to answer any questions anybody has about this ordinance.
I just want to reiterate, because I did drop probably the two most important words of that. This is relating to the sale of tobacco, nicotine products, et cetera, near schools.
Yes, and just to clarify, so this, just a little bit more detail, I guess, it prohibits a business from locating within a thousand feet of a public or private school where fifty percent of their revenue comes from cigarettes, tobacco, electronic smoking devices, electronic smoking device paraphernalia, et cetera.
And I guess just to clarify for the record, too, this would not affect any existing businesses already in place. This would solely apply to future business.
Correct. Correct.
All right. I would move to adopt the ordinance to amend section fifty-eight dash one four eight of the City of Fort Atkinson Municipal Code relating to the sale of tobacco, nicotine products, electronic smoking devices, and electronic smoking device paraphernalia near schools.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? This will be a roll call vote.
Councilman Becker.
Aye.
Councilman Hartwick.
Aye.
Councilman Housley.
Aye.
Councilman Johnson.
Aye.
President Shear.
Aye. That motion carries. Takes us to agenda item eight, reports of officers, boards, and committees. Eight A will be the annual tourism report. I believe Katie Carey, our Chamber of Commerce Tourism Manager, is here.
Hi, everyone. Thanks so much for having me here tonight. My name is Katie, and I'm the Tourism Manager at the Fort Atkinson Chamber of Commerce. And the reason I'm here tonight is to report on the current room tax trends that we saw in two thousand and twenty-one and the accomplishments of the Tourism Department And the accomplishments of the tourism department as part of the Fort Atkinson area Chamber of Commerce. Um, so hopefully in the agenda packets, you got the annual annual report document to look over beforehand. So I won't go too in depth with the first couple of paragraphs on the mission statement and introduction. But essentially, it tells the history of the room tax payments in Fort Atkinson and the impacts that the COVID nineteen pandemic has had. On the tourism industry as a whole. Um, so I'll just jump right into the financials and get, and I'll also get into the actual reports a little later on. But I'd like to start off by saying that in twenty twenty, we saw a fifty percent decline. In tourism room tax dollars compared to twenty nineteen. And twenty nineteen was actually not only Fort Atkinson, but the state of Wisconsin as a whole's best year. In terms of room tax revenue and tourism spending in general. So. Based on that, in the past couple of weeks, I also received the fourth quarter room tax payment after creating and sending out this annual report. But I'm happy to say that twenty twenty-one's room tax revenue is actually nearly back to where it was in twenty nineteen. This past November, the tourism department was also awarded a twenty-seven thousand five hundred and sixty dollar DMO grant. Made a made available by the federal ARPO funds. See here. Um, I think next I'd like to share that that was everything I mainly had on the financials and I'll kind of go into the reports a little more in a sec. But next I'd like to share a little bit more on some of the tourism efforts in twenty twenty-one. Um, so as my role as tourism manager at the chamber, I'm also part of a group called the Jefferson County Area Tourism Council. And in my role in that, I also help with writing content for the annual guidebook. And I also serve on the social media subcommittee, as well as the wedding subcommittee. Which is about to launch a promotion highlighting Jefferson County as a wedding venue destination in twenty twenty-two. Um, I'd also have to say that my biggest project in twenty twenty-one was working on a semi wrap project. With in partnership with W and A here in town, which is essentially a semi wrapped in a giant photo of Fort Atkinson. Is it's set to visit all forty-eight contiguous states over the next ten years or so. Um, and on the back panel, which is the most important real estate for following drivers, are eight logos of. Fort Atkinson's largest retail, or sorry, largest employers and tourism entities. Um, and also at the top of that back panel is a website landing page. That redirects to the chamber's website called choosefort.com. And so we can actually track who is visiting that and where they're visiting from, which is really cool to see. So I do have a couple of stats on that. Um, so so far, since it's been on the road, it's collected nearly two hundred and fifty visits. And I also have the top three locations of those. So it's actually not even Fort. It's Fort isn't even the number one. It actually goes Madison, Fort Atkinson, and Jamesville. And we've also collected some views from a few other locations around the country. Like Chicago, Los Angeles, Tucson, St. Louis, Myrtle Beach, and San Antonio, just to name a few. So, and I actually checked where it was going before coming to this meeting tonight. And it is currently traveling along California's southern coastline. So that's nice. So yeah, that's a little bit on the semi wrap project. Um, some of the additional advertising and marketing efforts included focusing on events in Fort Atkinson. Like the Fort Farmers Market, Rhythm Remix Manufacturing Month in October, the Holiday Lighted Parade. And the Holiday Open House and Market. Um, and along with that, there were some more promotions like the Eat Local Trivia Contest, the Coolest Thing Made in Fort contest. And essentially all social media and public or advertisements and various publications. See here. Other than that, I'll just jump into the goals for twenty twenty-two. And those include redesigning the front office area at the Fort Atkinson Chamber Office to focus on Fort Atkinson tourism and locally made products. Inviting an influencer or travel writer to visit Fort Atkinson, distributing the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-four Quality of Life Relocation. And Visitors Guide. Highlighting Fort Atkinson's amenities and experiences with a semi wrap promotion and discover Wisconsin's passport to adventure. As well as creating a video library and refreshing the website and updating the posters of the theater building. At the downtown market locations. Okay. And then we have the profit and loss budget versus actual tourism report. And this essentially shows actual spending versus budget predictions. And the Tourism Commission voted to kind of stay on the safe side with room tax predictions and stay sort with spending. So you'll actually see that also transfer into the twenty twenty but twenty twenty-two budget as well. Uh, so that essentially details the promotional efforts and the room tax revenue and twenty twenty-two plans for tourism in Fort. Um, did anyone have any questions I could help answer? I know it was kind of a lot.
Katie, I'm just curious on the that twenty-seven thousand dollar grant that was received, was that? Is that addressing potential losses that were experienced or is that are those funds that are planned for future projects?
Yeah, so there were some very specific requirements for what the grant money could be used for. So we applied for it kind of retrospectively. So it was applied for to. Essentially cover the salary of people who were working on tourism efforts in a community. So my position, um, as well as the semi wrap project. So that is what that twenty-seven thousand covers.
Thank you. I don't have any other questions, but I just, I mean, I've had the opportunity to work with you both in my professional role and in other volunteer roles. And I just, I think you're doing a great job. I think to see some of the newness that has come out in tourism efforts through the chamber. Considering what the last two years have been like, I think it could have been a really easy time to just kind of maintain status quo. And I think it's wonderful that you chose not to do that. There's been some really new neat things in the city. And and I hope you're proud of that and and I hope you know that people realize that and and appreciate it. So I think you're doing a great job.
Thank you very much. It's a, it's an easy community to help promote. It's a great place. So thank you very much. Uh, did anyone else have any other questions I can help answer? I feel like I flew through that. Um, well, if anyone has any questions, feel free to forward them on to me. I'd be happy to explain anything further. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Katie.
Thank you.
Next will be agenda item eight B, which is ours. Try that again. Next will be agenda item eight B, which is our city manager's report.
Thank you. So on Tuesday, we held a spring primary here at City Hall. Congratulations to those who are moving on to the spring election on April fifth. Voter turnout in the city was sixteen percent of registered voters or eleven hundred and forty-five people. Want to thank Michelle and her team for doing a wonderful job administering the election. I'd also like to thank the Parks Crew for assisting in setup and take down. You you see on election day, those mats on the floor and those those things are no joke. So that's not an easy task. And of course, I want to thank our election workers for all their efforts to make this election successful. So thank you all. And we've got three more opportunities to do it this year. Uh, the city council and city staff have had and continues to have informational meetings with the public relating to the public safety referendum. On the April fifth ballot. We met with our town partners last week. We met with the Chamber Board of Directors this week and the senior center this week. We have, uh, there's an interview with Michael Klish on the Fort Atkinson online website. President Shear was interviewed by WCLO. Chief Roush and I interviewed with a writer for the municipality magazine this week as well. Um, next week, we're presenting to the Rotary Club and the Kiwanis Club and we have a public information session on the twenty-second. That will be in this room in person and via Zoom. We have a second mailer that will be distributed within the next couple of weeks. And we have that website, visit the website or visit the website and click referendum for more information. And please take advantage of these opportunities to educate yourselves on the facts and make an informed decision on April fifth. Uh, as was mentioned briefly earlier tonight, we are starting to work on our comprehensive outdoor recreation plan or corp. The schedule is now coming into focus and we are planning to release the request for proposals for assistance with from our consultants. Uh, on or around March first. We also continue to work with our consultants on the banker road request for interest document. We expect that document to be out to the development community community in early March as well. Staff will have some additional year end financial reporting for the council on March first. And we will be presenting the Green Recognition Award on March first as well. So we have a lot of exciting things happening in March. And that is all I have.
So, thank you. Agenda item nine, unfinished business. This evening we have none. Agenda item ten, new business. Ten A is the review and possible action relating to the modification of control panel fifty-five dash LCP dash three dash two. Programmable logic controller PLC at a cost of eleven thousand nine hundred and sixty dollars from the wastewater utility equipment replacement fund. I practiced.
Great job. Uh, hello everybody. Um, so in twenty fifteen, we started a project to improve the efficiency of the aeration tanks. That's the out of the utility. It's a major power user out there, everything to do with that. We're aerating around two and a half million gallons of water to provide air for our biology out there that does all the work. Um, so we replaced a blower at that time with a with a new high efficiency blower. That part of the project went fine. We did a lot of other modifications at the same time to our plant SCADA system. And to some other things out on in that area. Then all went well and we started saving money immediately, especially with that blower being our our main air supplier now. But one of the things that we wanted to do at the time was also modify the control software out in that building. We had planned on changing the operation scheme to what's called the most open valve. It uses a lot less pressure, so it uses less power. But at the time, there were some things that we didn't, unbeknownst to us, the valve actuators out of those tanks were not. Did not have everything that we needed to do that. So we needed to be able to know the position of the valves on the tanks, but the PLC needed to know that. And those valve actuators couldn't provide that, so they would have to be replaced. So at that time, we thought we were going to be maybe one or two years out from, you know, probably like more like two years out from our our update. Um, as it turned out, we were further than that from from that at that time. So we had planned to start doing some of that work that we needed to do to to make way for being able to change our programming. And we eventually did do that. We replaced all six of the valve actuators on those tanks. In the last year, we had wiring that had to be done that our city electrician Jeff Armstrong took care of. And we've had all that wiring run. So the software program part of the of the work is actually owed to us. As a, as part of the the project, so so we don't owe any money for that. But the one thing we did not purchase at that time back then were some of the parts for the PLC, their analog input cards. And we need four or five of to complete that work. So everything else is paid for, except for those parts. Those LDBL and electronics is the company we use for all our controls at the plant. The they gave us a price of eleven thousand nine hundred and sixty dollars for for those parts. So we do recommend the purchase of those parts from LDBL and electronics for the cost of eleven thousand nine hundred and sixty dollars. And that money would come from our equipment replacement funds. Any questions on anything? It's kind of a lot. The parts. Right. Yeah, no, we don't have. That was, I just recently got the put the price more or less confirmed that it hadn't changed. Yeah, it's still the same price, which is rare because right now, a lot of things aren't aren't the same price. I was a little concerned when I talked to them about that. He said, no, no, we, you know, that's not a problem. So.
And there's no concern over what is left then in the replacement fund?
No.
Okay, I'm like, from my understanding, that's we're okay there, but I just want to confirm that.
I would move to approve the modification of control panel fifty-five dash LCP dash three dash two. Programmable logic controller, the cost of eleven thousand nine hundred and sixty dollars from the wastewater utility equipment replacement fund.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? This will be a roll call vote.
Councilman Becker.
Aye.
Councilman Hartwick.
Aye.
Councilman Housley. Councilman Johnson.
Aye.
President Shear.
Aye. That carries.
Thank you.
Next time, can we get one with more dashes and?
Okay, good.
Agenda item eleven miscellaneous. This evening we have none. Agenda item twelve, claims appropriations and contract payments. Twelve A is the review and possible action relating to the verified claims presented by the Director of Finance and Authorization of Payment.
I move to approve the verified claims presented by the Director of Finance and authorized payment.
Second.
Give a motion and a second. This will be a roll call vote.
Councilman Becker.
Aye.
Councilman Hartwick.
Aye.
Councilman Housley. Councilman Johnson.
Aye.
President Shear.
Aye. That motion carries. Takes us to agenda item thirteen this evening, which is adjournment.
I move to adjourn.
Have a motion and a second. All of those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That motion carries. This meeting is adjourned.